I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, June 1st. I will note for the record that Commissioner Githens is joining us via Zoom. And both Commissioner Jones and myself are present at Nat U Hill. And we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. I would like to make a motion to amend our agenda to add item H. And item H will be a contract with Bio One Northwest Indianapolis. Fund number 1138, Community Capital Development Fund, not to exceed $18,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right, thank you so much. And with that, we will move on to our department updates. And we have a panel here from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. I don't have a whole lot that's new today, but do want to give you a few updates. Our COVID-19 cases do continue to appear pretty stable at the moment. We're seeing a small decline this week, but our transmission level is still high. So I wanted to clarify that we still have a lot of virus that is circulating, even though we, our numbers are relatively stable. And there's a sign that maybe they're coming down just a little bit, this week anyway. So caution and risk assessments are in order. So we've talked about before, don't throw away your mask where it is you need to, indoors, public places, especially if your health, if you've got underlying health conditions or members of your family do. Our hospital numbers do remain stable, so that is very good news. And what the community levels are really focused on, and our community level right now remains low. Vaccinations are still available, and that is still the vital part of us really conquering this and reducing infections and different strains as well. So it was brought to our attention that the vaccine site map on the state dashboard had dropped our public health clinic information after we stopped using the online scheduling system. So we started taking those appointments locally. And by accident, they removed the, not just the ability to schedule an appointment, but they removed the information. So that is currently being resolved. We should be back up there soon. So if you need an appointment at our Public Health Clinic on Miller Drive for any of your vaccines, you can do that by calling 812-353-3244. 353-3244 to reach the Public Health Clinic and schedule your appointment. Testing is still available. There's lots of home tests that are available. Providers in the community also have testing. And that's where you may be likely to get your PCR test, if that's what you're looking for. Only provider tests are reportable. We've had some questions about this lately. Home tests are not reportable. Only providers are reporting positive cases at this time. Early on, when we didn't have a lot of information, we really needed to know the big picture, right? So we needed to know how many tests we were doing of all types, and whether they were negative and whether they were positive. We have a lot more information now, and so the landscape for reporting is changing. So we are moving more to what we do for influenza, for example. Influenza tests are not reportable. We report deaths from influenza. But we do have what we call Sentinel Sites. So we have locations that do influenza testing and report those. And then we do testing on those to see what's circulating. So we're kind of moving more in that direction for how we handle this. So at this time, we don't have to track all of the tests in order to know that our transmission levels are high. We can tell that they are high by just looking at those that are reportable through providers' offices. The value of home tests gives people quick access. You can have that home kit at home when you need it. So you don't have to go out to get it. You don't have to take an additional risk. And then you can get those results very quickly. And then if you need to, you have underlying health conditions, you're just concerned. You can contact your provider, see if you're eligible for treatments, or if you need to just stay home and isolate, follow those procedures. And then if you're a close contact, of course, follow the procedures for quarantine based on your vaccine status. So the good news is that the goal of having few deaths and less severe disease is certainly being felt currently locally. Our deaths, while they do still occur, are low. Our severe disease is low. So we're very, very happy about that. But we do still need to remain cautious and isolate if you test positive, quarantine accordingly to procedures based on your vaccine status if you're a close contact to somebody who tests positive. And then the last thing that I want to share, I've talked about this a little bit before, but our community health assessment, the actual report is published. It is online. It's on our website. So we finished the data collection at the end of 2021, and this was just published this spring. So take a look at that. And then as we start, we are working now to develop our community health improvement plans, and those will go up as we get those solidified. But that is definitely a living document that will continually change. And then our 2020, 2021 annual report for the department is also published, approved by the Board of Health, and posted on our website for review. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time.
Congratulations on getting those reports done. That's a, that's a big win, and there's a lot of great information there. So thank you for completing those. All right. Any other departments that have an update for us? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the next item on our agenda, which is a proclamation. This is a proclamation for Wear Orange Day. Whereas on average, more than 110 Americans are killed each day with guns, Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries. And Indiana, in Indiana, firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens. And access to a gun increases the risk of death by suicide by three times.
Whereas according to Every Town for Gun Safety, there are an average of 1,021 gun deaths in Indiana every year. Support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Local law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with the local crime activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe.
Whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at the age of 15. And on June 4th, 2022, to recognize her 25th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to, number one, Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence, and to the loved ones of those victims. The idea for a Gun Violence Awareness Day was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And by wearing orange on June 4th, 2022, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Now therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim June 4th, 2022 as Wear Orange Day. Proclaim this first day of June 2022 by the Monroe County Board of Commissioners.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next, we will have public comment. Public comment is the item on our agenda where anyone in the community can offer comments on anything that is not on our agenda. Every commenter is limited to three minutes, which is the same as with our agenda items. When you get to 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. When you hear that tone, it means you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comment. If you would like to speak during public comment, please raise your hand or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. We have one commenter. It is Counselor Iverson. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me all right?
We sure can.
Well, thank you. Commissioners, I wanted to briefly come before you virtually, and thank you for wearing orange. Thank you for your sensitivity to this topic. And I simply wanted to share that this morning, I, like many other parents across Monroe County, dropped their child off at a summer camp. And the thought that was inescapable crossed my mind that someone somewhere might come and harm my child. Thank you so much for taking on this issue. Thank you so much for speaking boldly to this issue. And I just wanted to publicly state my gratitude for your stance here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Iverson. We appreciate that, and we appreciate you joining us today. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer comment on an item not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes for May 25th, 2022.
I will second that. Any comments, corrections, or edits? Okay. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the minutes for May 25th, 2022?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims document accounts payable June 1st, 2022, and payroll June 3rd, 2022.
I will second that. We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Miller here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $6,609,320.39. $4,336,210 was for local income tax distribution. $904,734 of that amount was specifically for public safety local income tax distribution. $1.2 million was for United Way of Monroe County for the implementation of the Housing Insecurity Program. $352,174.41 was for Michiana Contracting, Inc. for Project 39 Runway Lighting and Signage Construction for our Aviation Department. $301,273.92 was for Monroe County Treasurer for 2022 Innkeeper's Tax Collection Distribution for May. And finally, for the Accounts Payable Claims, $114,746 was for John Jones Chrysler Dodge Jeep for the purchase of two 2021 Dodge Durangos for our Sheriff's Department. The total for payroll was $1,750,486.22. 70.5% were for the direct payroll costs, and the remaining 29.5% were for the indirect costs.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
And I don't either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the claims stock at accounts payable June 1st, 2022, and payroll June 3rd, 2022?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will note for the record that we have received two reports. The first is the Highway Department's Annual Report for 2020, for 2021, published in 2022, and the Waits and Measures Report, which runs from April 16th to May 15th, 2022. And we will now move on to new business, please.
Move approval of Fleming Interior Group for the Surveyors Office. Fund name, 2020 Geo Bond Capital Projects. Fund number 4813, in the amount of $1,882.22.
We have a motion. I will second that. Mr. Crone, will you tell us all about it, please?
Good morning, everyone. Greg Crone, Monroe County Facilities and Fleet Manager. First item I have for you is pretty straightforward. Our Surveyors Office is currently using hand-me-down furniture that they've gotten from different departments over the years that's well beyond its service life. This request is to purchase them five new chairs through the Fleming Interior Group from Kimball Furniture Company.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No, thanks.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I just believe it's needed, and I'm glad you're taking care of it.
I know they'll appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm sure they will. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the motion on Fleming Interior Group for the Surveyors Office?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Strauss Construction Company, Inc. for Election Operations. Fund name, Election Fund. Fund number 1215, in the amount of $9,615.
We have a motion. I will second that motion, and Mr. Crone, please tell us all about this one.
Okay, for those that don't know, the site that we now use as election operations at 302 South Walnut was formerly the Napa Auto Parts Store. That building was built warehouse-style with 18-foot ceilings to accommodate high shelving. Therefore, the HVAC system that is in place was designed around those 18-foot ceilings and to keep all the ductwork at ceiling level. When we turned that into election operations and designed the ballot room, we knew we would have to address the issue of climate control and air circulation and quality within that ballot room since it's enclosed. We looked at it a couple of different ways with different options to modify the existing system. And it was figured out that it was more cost-effective to install a split HVAC system, similar to what you see like in hotel rooms, or they did it a lot in homes now where it's a ceiling-mounted unit that does heat and air conditioning. So it was figured that it was more cost-effective to implement that system inside that ballot room. That way, we can ensure air quality and climate control throughout the year. The added benefit to that is if we use that for electronic storage, equipment storage, that will become its own compartmentalized climate control, and we can have the rest of the building set at a different temperature, which will help us save on utilities.
Right. Thank you so much for the great explanation. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I'm glad this is being done so quickly.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I understand computers like being a whole lot colder than most of us do. So keeping the whole place that cold wouldn't be very pleasant for anyone.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the motion on the contract with Strauss Reconstruction Company for Election Operations?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking care of that. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of American Rescue Plan Act Fund, or ARPA, Amendment Number Three.
I will second that motion, and Mr. Cockrell, please tell us all about it.
Yes, this incorporates three changes to our ARPA plan. The first, we had lost revenue in the plan, but it was in accordance with the calculations being performed for the county. I believe the first year, we had just over 2.4 million in lost revenue. Since that time, the Federal Department of Treasury allows us to use a one-time $10 million threshold to just budget that way and then utilize just $10 million of the revenue for lost revenue purposes. This proposes to do that. We also added two more items to our ready-to-be-funded portion of it. The first is for transitioning children to kindergarten, making sure they are ready and prepared for the kindergarten experience. As we know, COVID-19 has isolated us all, and we want to make sure that those children are ready to enter kindergarten. And the second is to support some construction for Sojourn House, which helps those people who have been trafficked get back into a normal life.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I want to thank everybody on both the County Council and my colleagues and the Board of Commissioners for supporting funding for the transition to kindergarten program and for helping with Sojourn House. I think both of these are worthwhile projects, and so I'm glad to have your support with these.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I agree. Both of these projects are important and are things that it's certainly worthwhile using the ARPA money for.
Mr. Cockrell, I have a question about the $10 million loss revenue allocation. How does that work in terms of where does that money land? Does it stay in a fund?
Well, I think, I think it's important to note, and important for the public to know, that none of the funds in the, I'm going to call it the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. I know it has a different name that they changed. None of that money gets moved to any other fund within the county. It all remains in that fund. This is just allocating within that fund that the use of that $10 million can be for purposes that are related to lost revenue. I think we could always utilize it for these projects, but it remains in the fund, and it's just allocation. And I think primarily the reason the Federal Treasury did this was so that we could adequately budget. Because if you're, I think most local governments, and certainly Monroe County was one of those, prioritized the lost revenue portion of the funding as being the first way they want to utilize it. Well, if you don't know what that number is until you've done the calculation after three and four years, you can't really adequately plan to use all those funds, the remaining funds.
Right. Yep. Thank you so much for that. I appreciate the additional explanation. I will just note that we have teams of Commissioners and council members who are investigating a number of suggested projects for the ARPA funding. And hopefully, we will have some additional information for the public at the council meeting, work session meeting at the end of June. That should be great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on American Rescue Plan Act Fund, ARPA Amendment Number Three?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move improvement for an agreement for eminent domain action for road improvement.
I will second that. We have Mr. Schilling joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave Schilling from the Legal Department. And this agreed findings and judgment relates to the acquisition of right-of-way along Simpson Chapel Road through the eminent domain process. And Attorney Yasmin Stumpf, representing the county in this case, and came up with this agreement after, I think, at least one or two mediations. So this is the standard form that we always use in these situations. The amounts are set forth in there, the total amount to be paid is around $197,000. And I would note that the judgment form only has one signature line for the Commissioners. So if you could authorize the President to sign that on behalf of the Commissioners, that would be helpful, too.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No. Do we need to amend the motion?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jones, if you wouldn't mind. Or I can go ahead and do it. I would like to move to amend the original motion to include the authorization of the signature to, for myself, Commissioner Thomas, to sign this document upon approval.
Second.
Any comments or questions for my colleagues on the amended motion? Any public comment on the amendment? Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on amending the motion on the agreement for eminent domain action? Yes.
Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is to amend, is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm just glad that this is another step getting us on the way to finishing this project.
Right.
It's been difficult.
I imagine. Let's see if there is, thank you for working on this. Is there any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the amended agreement for eminent domain action for road improvement?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of an MOU regarding use of property at 302 South Walnut Street. Fund name, Election Fund. Fund number 1215, in the amount of $4,800 per month.
I will second that. Mr. Cockrell, tell us all about it, please.
Well, I would start off, this is just a memorandum. It's not a memorandum of understanding. This is for the property we discussed earlier with the air conditioning system, the 302 North Walnut.
South Walnut.
South Walnut. I apologize. This is for our use of that building. As we all know, that building was purchased with Innkeeper's tax money, and Innkeeper's tax money is still paying off the debt for that, for that purchase. And that this is a way where the county is going to reimburse the the debt fund for the convention center, to the extent that they've lost rental revenue that they could have possibly have gotten if we were not using that building. This has been, the money for this has been appropriated by the County Council.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
And I don't either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Seeing none, we will come back for a vote. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the memorandum regarding the use of property at 302 South Walnut Street?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of an agreement with Washington Township Water Authority. Fund name: Cumulative Capital Trails, Fund Number 1138, in the amount of $268,700.
I will second that. Mr. Cockrell, can you give us a little information on this?
Yes, this is for the relocation of some water lines for what I believe to be our bicentennial trail. We've been working on this project for quite a while, and I think, my memory is that this may be the last hurdle outside actual getting the work done that we have. So we've talked with the water, and this, we've been discussing this with the water company for quite a while, and this is the resolution that I think we all thought made sense.
All right. Thank you so much. I know this took a great deal of work and effort to get this finalized. I know Ms. Ridge was a key component in getting this done as well. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No. Glad it's being done, though, too.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just am relieved that we finally got to this point.
Absolutely. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the agreement with Washington Township Water Authority?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the purchase of Rightofway and temporary easement for the Vernal Pike Connector Road. Fund name: West Side Tiff, Fund Number 4920, in the amount of $30,000.
I will second that. Mr. Cockrell?
This is just purchasing some right-of-way for our Vernal Pike Connector Road, and again, that's the road that will connect Vernal Pike to Gates Drive and Profile Parkway. This is one of a few that we have left to purchase.
Excellent. That was actually, my question is, we do have more to deal with, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm just glad to see this moving forward. It's something that people who use those roads in that area are really going to appreciate.
Yeah, absolutely. Hopefully, it will ease some of that congestion and really help with the economic development in the area. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. All right. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the purchase of Rightofway and temporary easement for Vernal Pike Connector Road?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. And now we have our item H, which was added onto our agenda.
Move approval of a contract with Bio One Northwest Indianapolis. Fund name: Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Fund Number 1138, in an amount not to exceed $18,000.
I will second that. Mr. Cockrell, please tell us all about this.
Well, I guess I would start by saying that the $1.2 million we gave as part of the claims today to United Way is meant to address this problem, right? This, this issue has occurred. We received numerous complaints about a homeless encampment on one of the county properties. We have followed our code and our requirements under that code to give them notice to remove. And then that deadline will be tomorrow at noon, and then after that, we have some work ahead of us to get the area cleaned up. We have a, we walked the site yesterday. I walked it with the Sheriff's Department, Highway Department, Emergency Management Department, and Solid Waste Department, and there was a lot more there than we had expected or anticipated. And so this is a, an agreement to help make sure that we can get that property into a sanitary state as soon as we can. They expect it will take up to five days to accomplish that, and that is with the help of our Highway Department and Toby Turner has, working with Toby Turner, so we think we can make that, accomplish that, and hopefully, get this done by the end of the weekend. But it will be, but it could potentially go into Monday.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cockrell. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I wanted to thank Mr. Cockrell and those that went out to the site and for sending along pictures to us so that we could actually see without being out there ourselves what the issue was. It may, it makes approving this contract much, much easier.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, there are all kinds of things that are unfortunate about this situation, but I'm glad that we're going to be able to rectify it.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. Difficult situation, but we do have to keep everybody safe, and that's, that's the key here. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor, I'm sorry, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the contract with Bio One Northwest Indianapolis?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero, and I would just add that they've looked at the contract, and if they have any corrections, we'll review those and just assume that as long as they meet our, the legal department's approval, those would be integrated into this.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. All right. We don't have any appointments today. We do have some announcements. Commissioner Giffens, did you want to talk about Saturday's event to begin with?
Well, there are actually two events on Saturday related to gun violence. County Council Member Peter Iverson and Courtney Daly are hosting Zoom program at 10 o'clock on Saturday about gun violence prevention and health issues that will be available via Zoom and on Facebook, and so you can, I think, find that through Mr. Iverson's Facebook page. And then at 8 o'clock Saturday evening, there will be a Wear Orange event at Switchyard Park, and public is invited to join us.
All right. Thank you so much. We had, the Hoosier Hills Food Bank had its first summertime distribution for Fresh Food Fridays last Friday, and I was honored to be part of that volunteer team, and they planned for serving 400 families and ended up serving 577, which tells you that the need is still there, and it's still great. So the next one will be, the next distribution event will be on June 24. The next blood drive for the Red Cross is Monday, June 27, 10 to 3, and Thursday, June 30, 1 to 6. Both of these are at IV Tech. Thank you to IV Tech, and if anyone wishes to donate blood, we would really appreciate it. Please go to redcross.org and make your appointment. Just a reminder that we do have office hours at least six times a month, and all you have to do is go to co.munro.in.us and look at the calendar, and, and you will find a list of the dates and times to join via Zoom for, to have a conversation with us. And as Commissioner Giffens notes, this is not a recorded conversation, but you're welcome to raise any complaints, concerns, or issues with any of us during those office hours, and we're really happy to be able to offer this service to our community. We also have a number of openings on boards and commissions. This includes Redevelopment Commission, Economic Development Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Women's Commission. If you're interested, please apply, co.munro.in.us, and go to Boards and Commissions in the search and find the application. We really appreciate your input and your assistance. Excuse me. Also, just to note that the Board of Commissioners is proudly flying the pride flag at the courthouse for the month of June, which is Pride Month. So this is a time to celebrate the freedom to be ourselves, and we are grateful that we can do this for the community. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, we do not have a work session agenda, so this will be, this will be the end of our meetings today. Our next meeting here will be June 8, 10 a.m. right here in the Nat U Hill Room and via Zoom. Without any, anything else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.